Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. President. We again have Mr. Walt Lewis here. And when he was here before, really, he gave an overview of what's going to happen, or what the goal is to happen out there on East Vine Street. And so tonight, we only have a five-minute committee meeting, and I think that should be enough time. I'd like to give council time to ask questions initially, and if there's extra time, Mr. Lewis can go ahead and speak some more if he thinks he needs to. But I'll just start on the far side. So, Mr. Severance, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Ruffman? Janice, do you have any questions about?
You did a great job.
Just remind me, last week, two weeks ago, we talked about who is going to be responsible for maintenance and those kind of things. But as I recall, if there was any city responsibility, is that, that's correct, right?
I can answer it. So, the only city responsibility would be to execute the lease with AEP. It would cost us an extra $50 a year to ensure the AEP standards. We've also agreed to provide some water, like we do at our other community parks. But in terms of above the ground, Walt and his team have agreed to take care of that.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Hillier?
To just latch onto that, so I'm sure you're planning on, like, keeping the, you said you were going to put up a fence, correct?
Yes.
So initially, there probably won't be a fence?
Correct. That's the timing. I'm still trying to work out the timing as far as all of that works.
But once it is, I'm sure you'll keep the weeds out of the fence and cleaned up and...
Oh, yeah.
And then parking, you said it was going to be on Lawn Avenue?
Correct.
But there will be nothing determined from parking on Vine Street, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
I know, I talked to the resident in the red house, and I know he had questions. Have you two been able to get together on that yet?
The resident, now, which house are you talking about?
Right across, in the red house, right across the street from it. I can give you a name afterward if you want.
I think the person, there was one individual, Kendi and I, that way to talk with me, and I believe that's the individual.
Okay.
That had concerns.
Okay.
Yes.
And his concerns were answered, then?
Yes, the, I haven't had a follow-up conversation with him, but I definitely noted the concerns of off-street parking and his concern of, he has lived there a little longer than I have, to maintain the property how nicely as it is. I completely, I don't disagree. And, yeah, yeah.
That's all I had. Here.
So, oh, go ahead.
So, just to piggyback on Mr. Hillier's question, Lawn Avenue parking and then Vine Street, so we're not blocking residents parking along those streets?
No, absolutely no. The Lawn Avenue, I would like, I would like to see the fence maximize the area as much as possible, you know, just to have the garden there. That's yet to be decided, but that's, that's in my mind what's happening. But definitely allowing space on the Lawn Avenue side, which there's, it's, it's an empty block. So it happened right there, it wouldn't block, yeah, there wouldn't be any blockage blocking there.
I read some things about East School being interested in doing that, but East School's done in, in June. How's that going to work?
Well, carrying through when the crops are developing.
I know. Excellent question. And that's where the blended ownership, I was, kind of, that we're leaning toward, where it would be East School, let's, potentially, East School, and you're combining with another agency, like Habitat for Humanity, or they've expressed some interest in our church. So you have blended ownership of, of a particular block, so that that could be addressed, you know, that I, the, during those off, you know, the off-school days, yeah, yeah. And I have not talked with any of the teachers of East School at the moment. I've talked with Nancy Bevan with the Farm to School program, and it would be a development kind of phase on that. But it would definitely have to be addressed.
There's also a lot of activities farming-wise that can happen during the winter, such as composting, that the students can also learn from. So there are activities that can happen in the fall or the early spring while they are in session. The other thing I'd like to say about what Mr. Hillier mentioned with the maintenance specifically, that was my biggest concern when the United Way approached us and when we had our first sit-down meeting. I did say that I wanted it into the lease, that if it gets overgrown, the city reserves the right to come in and make sure that it is well-maintained for that residence. Not maintained as a garden, but rather it would be turned back to just the grass.
They'd have to follow the same as everybody else, the grass height plus Knox Street.
Yeah.
And regarding that, the, you know, as this is transitioning through, we, and I haven't followed up with AEP, my hope was that if the, if the city is able to take this over, at least this, this property, that the maintenance agreement could maybe be maintained with AEP until next year. You know, so basically, I'm hoping that it could, that AEP could maintain that throughout the remainder of the year, you know, growing through winter. And I'm hoping that we could get things, a lot more planning in place, fencing, get the planters going and things like that.
So, we had hoped to have legislation today. Part of the reason is, is we spoke with AEP the week of last council meeting, their attorney was out. Rob had asked for some minor modifications of the contract. So we do expect to be able to have that by next meeting. Again, I don't think you're planning to kick off any real growing this year, and so we could actually delay execution of that lease until, you know, grass growing season is over.
Where's the water going to come from in case there's a drought or something?
So, we have already looked. There is a water line right there, and just as we do at our other parks, we can easily tap into that for an access point for them. And that has already been discussed with engineering. The cost is really minimal. It's the same that we would do for other facilities in the city. My time is up for that one, so thank you for being here.
If you want to adjourn that committee, we're now going to go back to Parks and Lands and Mrs. Keener to discuss the Parks Master Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, in front of you, you have, I should have had, Rick, I should have had you have these up. I'm sorry. But everybody does have the forms in front of them, including Carol. These are our basic designs for the splash pad and also a library pavilion. These are just initial. I will say that the splash pad was the number-one item that was requested when we did the Parks Master Planning roughly two years ago. We had a lot of feedback from the community. We had public meetings where they came in here. We had online surveys. And so we have been very fortunate in having local organizations who were interested in partnering on these two projects. It has been a while coming, but I think that there were some details that we wanted to work out. There are more details that will come in the future. But due to the funding that the library will be seeking, we wanted to ensure that this was public so that they can share these initial designs as they proceed forward. So first, I'd like to have Terry come up and just talk just briefly about kind of the process that will happen with accepting some funding for this. And maybe some of the history of how we got here.
History, I've got a lot of history. Thank you, Mrs. Keener. Council, this is kind of a kickoff, if you will. This is quite a project for which there's going to be a lot, I would consider to say, a significant amount of activity going on in our Riverside Park area. The library has a pavilion for which they're wanting to structure, that they're going to want to put together. And even back in the days of Mayor Mavis, we, him and I, had a number of occasions that talked about a splash pad somewhere within our parks system for the youth and those folks that would enjoy something like that. Of course, we never got to that point yet, at this point with his time. But it has come back up, and it is, is going to be something that would actually accent the Riverside Park area and facilities within that area as well. And with that, this is going to be a donation for which you will hear more from as we begin to facilitate and get all of our ducks in a row, so to speak, if you will. And, and then take on this donation, a significant amount of donations coming in for this facility and, and the neighboring splash pad area. I have been in Rotary now for nearly 30 years, and I can remember when Leitner was his name, was the president at the time of Rotary, and came up with the idea of the park facility, that, but as part of Rotary Parks, that the Rotary Fund, or the Rotary Organization of Mount Vernon got about $100,000 to put that facility in, in Riverside Park. As most of you know, and have been around for a while, shortly after, and very shortly after that, the facility was all put together, we had vandalism unbelievable. Beautiful, nice picket fence that they had all enclosed around that facility for those youth activities. And it just, they just tore it all apart. So anyhow, that, that was kind of a downfall, we felt, in that regards, that, you know, that we couldn't have people that would take better, better care of something like that, especially when you've got someone donating $100,000 to a facility for the youth. However, this project that Mrs. Keener is talking about, the library and the splash pad, is actually a continuation of what's already going to be there. The water treatment plant, as all of us know from the years ago, used to set out in front of the facility of what's going to be here, and the playground that's already there. But also, they're going to make this connection between the pavilion from the library. It's a very interesting on an educational platform, is what they're also working with in that regards. So that's the updates of what we've got so far. It's a little sketchy. We're still trying to paint the rest of the picture here for you. And in some cases, we're not able to provide you exactly all the information. But it's, it's something that I think our community and our West End, that's your territory, Mr. Ruffman, that would facilitate, again, moving right along with what you've got over there on Marion Street, up in that, in Marion Madison area, and the parks coming right on down around there, will actually be a more of a continuity of all of that coming together. So, thank you, Mrs. Keener.
Thank you so much. We actually have a representative from the library as well, and I'd like to just give her a minute or two to talk about their portion of this.
Please come up, can I ask you, Captain Hunter Rice?
So, the donation for the splash pad is coming from Area Preparation, and the splash pad will be named in honor of Hunter Wright. So you'll see the theme of the splash pad is a pirate theme, and we'll be honoring him through his name on the arch over the entryway.
Good afternoon. I'm Jamie Lynn Smith-Blutter, Development and Writing Program Manager at the Public Library of Mount Vernon in Knox County. And I want to thank all of you on council for letting me talk today, and especially Amber for inviting me. We are really, really excited. The Public Library's Board of Trustees reviewed renderings for the green space or pavilion building, as, as we're calling it, at our June 26th board meeting. And it was received with such enthusiasm that they passed a unanimous resolution to make it happen and to move forward, of course, with your permission, you know, in collaboration with the city. We're excited to propose using it. We are looking to have an expanded space for more family-friendly library programs that invite our community members to gather and enjoy educational and enrichment and entertainment events that, as with all library activities, are always free and open to the public. We're really looking at doing some great stuff, from exercise and dance classes to outdoor music lessons, maybe some foodways, cooking, foraging, projects, public meetings. And of course, we'll still be doing our author talks and our, you know, author visits and book talks, and our, our youth summer reading program will allow us to expand our footprint, again, in Riverside Park, which potentially, particularly favors the West End. So on behalf of the library director, John Tidester, and our Board of Trustees, we want to thank you for considering this proposed collaboration with the city in expanding our programs and community offerings. And our plans have been in place for a while. They've been aspirational up to this point. But today, with your help, we hope to move forward, you know, one step closer to realization. I'm happy to answer any questions. Does anyone have as well?
Well, thank you so much for coming. There will be more meetings on this as we gather more information. Right now, we're doing a little bit more digging into specifications of costs. And so that'll probably be coming towards the end of the month. But I did want this initial meeting to happen so that you guys can have some information. And, oh, sorry.
You're fine. For the public that's maybe sitting there going, well, where is this going to be at Riverside Park? Can you give, put a, an approximate to that?
I, I thought Terry did a little bit of that with talking about how this is going to be connected to the Rotary Park, the playground that is currently there. If you've seen the volcano fountain, as it's, you know, affectionately called, it will actually be right in that location, the splash pad will be.
Will they lose our fountain that doesn't work?
Yes. We're going to lose the fountain that doesn't work. But the, the multipurpose building or the, the library pavilion will sit back from that and will be integrated into the trees and the nature that is around that. So we have some really cool ideas for how to do that. But again, these are initial, and we will have more firm plans and more solid information coming towards the end of the month, so.
Any ideas target for when?
We would like to be digging dirt by the fall. So this has moved right along at a rapid clip, I think, so. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I'm sorry whoever else is meeting. I ran over.
Okay. We're going to move now to utilities with Mrs. Woods to discuss retention ponds.
So I think I'm kind of bumping somebody else's committee, but since I asked for it, he said I should go ahead. So called this because there were some questions about maintaining of retention ponds. Was hoping Mr. Ball could be here. If there's questions we don't get answered, we'll do another committee meeting at the next meeting. But I, I know, Mr. Hillier, you've heard, you've had some comments. I've had a couple of phone calls.
I'll start it, and I'm going to turn it over to Mel. Basically, I was contacted by a resident or two in Compass Point that was upset that the retention pond on Fairgrounds Road, that he said was being mowed by the city last year, all of a sudden looks ugly, and wanted to know what was going on. Talking to, actually in a meeting that we had here, during a break, we were talking about it. We, I understood there was going to be a letter sent out, I thought, this month to the people of Compass Point. Then I talked to Brian. Brian said he didn't know anything about the letter, but that's great. So I thought, okay, let's get it on the floor so we can talk about it and see what's going on. Mel's done some footwork on it, and Mel's also a resident. And I'm going to turn it over to him and maybe add a little bit here, a little bit.
So yes, I've received some phone calls from neighbors in my neighborhood. And so, just so everybody's aware, it's not only my streets, which is basically latitude and longitude, which is called Compass Point, but there's also other ones around the city. Venture Drive, which is up around Big Lots area, that area, which is kind of more business a little bit. There's a retention pond there that is supposedly private. The Gil, Gilcrest Estates, which are being built right now. And then Laurelwood also has a retention pond. So these are, these are some that are evidently owned by the residents of those areas. And I, I think what I am a little bit, I guess disappointed is the word, is that the decision to not mow these anymore, to maintain them, was done in 2022, and yet no, no notice was sent to any of the residents. So, you know, I was on vacation. As you know, I missed the first meeting this month. Come back, and I've got neighbors getting ahold of me about why is the retention pond not getting mowed? And if you look at it now, it's four feet tall, both of them. The one that's between longitude and Fairgrounds Road and the one that is just north of longitude. So I didn't know anything that had happened there, and basically, we didn't tell the residents, and I'm assuming that's the case in these other areas, that they were not going to be mowed this year, and now we have them out of control and no answer on how that's going to get done. The only answer I've got was from Brian, and I did meet with the engineer, Brian Ball. Basically, there's three options. One, number one would be that we could organize ourself and pay for mowing this. Two, we could set up a private stormwater management facility utility, which is essentially a fee added on to all of our bills to maintain our own retention ponds in our, in our respective areas. Or third, the city would mow these and essentially issue fines to all the members under these two sections, 92024 and 92099, which would not be a good way to go. I, I think the, the key thing for me is that there's no notice, and now they're out of control, and who's going to mow them? And I, I almost went down in Saturday with my residential model weed whacker and started doing it, and then I thought how stupid that would be. I'd be down there four hours and maybe dead by the time I got out. So that's not a realistic option, that the residents have to go down in there and mow, at least not in my opinion. I actually got online and looked at what a commercial level weed whacker would be, and it was 250 bucks. And I'm like, I'm not doing that. So I guess, you know, I was thinking about this a little bit today, and I just thought, well, what if we got four to six inches of snow, and then we don't plow Burgess Street? Because, and now they have to take care of Burgess Street. We're not going to plow it. But now you got to get out there with shovels and do that after we've got the snow. That's, that may be an extreme example, but not really, because now we have retention ponds on my street that are not getting any maintenance.
Well, isn't that a bit different? Because Burgess Street is up, is the city-owned street.
So my, but my, let's just say those residents own that street, and we don't, and we've always plowed it all these years, and now we get a snow and we're not going to plow it anymore. To me, that's a little bit.
You're incorrect about a number of things here. Number one is that as far back as, oh, my second or third year here in the Law Director's Office, I informed when I found out that Mayor Mavis and Mr. Daniels and Mr. Glass before them were mowing these, I told them that that was not legal and not an appropriate use of city funding.
But they kept doing it.
And we have at times told the various, we've told a number, I've been in several meetings with Mr. Ball, where we've told residents in some of these various areas that they needed to have plans to do that, to...
How did you tell, how did we tell them?
I remember Brian saying is that it's your legal requirement. I mean, and the one up there near latitude and longitude is particularly problematic because of the way the, the developer worked with that, with the pond. The one on Venture Drive, I know that there, that we had worked on agreements with the owners who are affected by that one, so I just, I don't know where they are, but I know that we have had negotiations with them for the city to maintain that and for us to be paid to do that.
Okay. So my, I'm still going to go back to my point.
Yeah.
Somebody decided last year, in 2022, we were no longer going to mow them. And I live on that street. I never got anything. I was never communicated. I've been on.
I don't know anything about that decision.
So it's not fair. If you talk about integrity and fairness, it's not fair to just say, okay, you got to take care of this now, and it's July 10th, and it's four feet tall. I mean, that's not due notice. It's not, I would say it's not even ethical to just say, you got to figure this out. So my, my question then is, how are we going to get these taken care of this year and let the residents of my street and these other areas organize whatever it would be, whether it's a stormwater management facility utility, private, private, to add a little bit of money on to our water bills to take care of these in the future? But we have an issue now with four feet.
I, I don't know any.
Can I get a point of clarification on that? So the, the fee you just talked about, Mr. Ball said they could, they could initiate that. The residents would pay it. I'm assuming the city collects it, and then the city would be maintaining it?
We would hire somebody. I don't know who's been hired. I haven't been able to get the answer.
See, that's one of the reasons I called this meeting is because...
Who has been mowing these to this point?
Like I told Mel, are they supposed to carry a can up the street and ask for a collection? What is, what is the city's policy? What is in writing? What is it, what are they supposed to be doing? And is it, is it, I mean, if it's, if it's a policy that the city is supposed to be charging these residents, I mean, we can't expect a neighborhood, people move in and out of all the time, to know what's, that they've got to put in 50 cents every other week to have the grass mowed, whatever that number's going to be, without something in place.
If it's not legal for the city to be on that property, mow it, how is it legal for them to collect the money and be on that property and mow it?
Because the city, if the residents band together and choose to have it, an agreement with the city, that would allow them access to do it. In that case. And that goes to the issue why I previously told them that they shouldn't be doing it.
So we can go forward, though, to today, and that's what, I mean, because there's people listening right now at home that are trying to come out of this with some kind of an answer. Is that answer going to be, you guys are going to get together with Brian and say, this is what we need to go forward? I mean, it's, it can't be up to the residents to call a town meeting and, because that guy's going to move, and then you're back to square one. And it's just like, one of the residents says, well, if we got it back in shape, we'd mow it. I said, what if you hit the lottery and leave?
So is the problem the grass is four feet tall then?
Yes.
Oh, it's ugly.
Is, is the, does the city have the ability to knock it down with some piece of equipment?
That's not my.
Well, not only, not only that one, there's a second retention pond that comes off of the backside, which I still have video on my phone, the water running off the field into it. And Brian says there's probably sediment needs dug out of that, so.
No, I'm just saying that this, obviously, Mel doesn't have the equipment. None of his neighbors have.
He's going to take a bush hog or whatever.
If the city had the equipment, could we make a $1 agreement one time, the city will take care of these and going forward?
I, I think that that makes sense to, to make the space workable initially, because that communication didn't happen. This would be a good middle ground where we can find some compromise, get the area cleaned up, and have time to create that agreement with, with the residents. But I think that if you start to move into the space where you want city employees to mow and maintain all these new spaces, we're going to need to be looking to add two or three people to our public works department.
Or you contract it out like we do Silver Parks now.
I think it's been contracted now. I don't believe the city workers have been mowing it. Somebody, Rick or somebody, would have.
I can tell you this. So up until about 2020, it was city workers mowing these retention ponds. We did begin contracting it out around the 2020 or 2021 region or period of time. But again, this question has frankly been swirling since the mayor got into office about what are we going to do to correct this problem? And at some point, you know, we really do need to move forward in the correct path.
I'm a little confused on you owning it. What's, what's your deeds say? I mean, what's, what's the property say? Who owns that property?
That's a good question. I may have to try to find my deed. I was never in.
All of your deeds refer back to the initial property that was platted. And in that, there is a reference to the stormwater regulations of the city. And so that is how you are on legal notice about your requirements.
So in Mel's deed, he can find that exact language?
No.
He can find, as part of his chain of title, it goes back to, and that's in, you get a title examination, and it goes all the way back, and it shows that in the original plaque, that there are references to that.
So my point, I'll go back to my point again. It can't be left to... It can't be left to Mel, I mean, okay, I have ownership in this, tell me how I'm supposed to do it? Do you want me to collect the money up the street and everybody call me a thief for taking their money? I personally, I want it in writing, if it was me, I would want it in writing from the city of Mount Vernon, what I have to do. And to prove to me how much it's going to cost, where exactly that money's going, and everything right down the line, just like we do with everything else. I, I also, I was looking into the city's website, when it refers to you, when you go to the top and it says stormwater, it says utilities, you go down, it says stormwater. And it's under the, because it refers you to the mount vernon ohio.org forward slash stormwater dash utility dash, excuse me, forward slash. In there it says, the city of Mount Vernon owns, comma, operates, comma, and maintains a municipal stormwater system which provides stormwater management services throughout the incorporated limits of the city, period. System elements include stormwater pipes, comma, catch, catch basins, comma, culverts, swales, ditches, outfalls, as well as control, control structures such as ponds and stormwater best management practices and BMPs. So, it says here, you own them.
No, we own the ones that are, belong to the city. These are on private developments. Any development that was created after about nineteen seventy-seven pursuant to the Clean Water Act has to have its own private stormwater system. This is a rule that comes down from the feds to the Ohio EPA and then we're left holding the bag to enforce it.
So, where do we go from here?
I have a similar situation in my house. Behind my house, we have between one and two acres of land. Uh, it's not a retention pond, but it's land that, that twelve of us around there own. It's in a trust. And, and what we do is, one guy in the neighborhood goes around and collects a ridiculously low amount of money to, to mow this. A company comes out and mows that, uh, for us, uh, they were there today, mowing it. And, and we all chip in, uh, some of us have a lot, some of us have a lot and a half and some of us have two lots. And depends on the size of your lot, is how much you're assessed. But we pay to have that mowed, because we don't want to go out and mow it.
Who set up that trust and who told you you had to? That's the question.
I, I just looked it up, it's, it's, it's a trust that was set up. And, and Chuck Metcalf is the one that goes around and collects the money and he, the trust may be in his name, I don't know. But we all, we all collectively own that property and we all maintain that property, because we want it maintained.
And that makes sense for that and, and, and that's the kind of thing I believe that we can do in these other areas that have these ponds that are supposedly private.
Well, they are private because your house could not have been built, except that there was this private stormwater system.
Okay.
And all of these developments, that's the way it is.
That's fine, okay, I got it, so, but the point is, mowing it is one cost. I mean, I, I could go down there and mow that for fifty bucks, okay, if I had the proper equipment. But when they fail, if there's an issue with them failing and they're not working, and Brian has alluded to that and has mentioned that they should be all examined, hopefully in August or September, then, then we got a larger issue. Now, it's not just a fifty dollar issue, it's a fifty-five hundred dollar issue to go in and dig it out or whatever.
Or you have what's happening out with the Knox Cattle Company Dam, which is a million dollar issue.
Right, but, but here's the thing, as, we need an answer. We need help from the city to help us set up whatever this is and get this organized. Because, um, you know, these, there's, there's at least forty-five homes probably in my, on this, these two retention funds we're discussing in my neighborhood and I don't know about Laurelwood and Gilcrest and the other ones.
Do we know how many of these exist?
That's what I was going to say.
He named them.
All of them?
I mean, is that...
Are you sure that's all of them?
I believe it's Laurelwood, Gilcrest Estates, Venture Drive and Compass Point.
And don't forget, there's places like Walmart that has one, there's rural one in front of Rural King, but he's naming the ones compared to what we're dealing with here.
Those are, those are private ones, there, uh, there are ones across the way, uh, up there where Rural King, yeah, Rural King, they have several in that one. Uh, there are ones down actually where Kroger is, it's actually buried underneath the asphalt, but there are things there as well. They're all stormwater management and control systems, not just the big dry basins, there are other types. And there are a number actually out at the, uh...
But once you start doing this for one, you've got to make it available for all of them.
Well, and I think now's a good time to compare what everybody's doing.
Yeah, I was going to say, we got to make it available for everybody and get something consistent.
Yeah, true, part of the issue that Rob brought up years ago is, is we have these few areas that we are supporting, we're not supporting all the others, but also, part of the reason about a year ago that the utility commission passed rules about joining a basically stormwater fund where the city would maintain it is to get away from the challenge of these smaller developments having to worry about these things. So, Gilcrest Estates is actually a very different case because they have already created that agreement with the city to maintain and pay for their stormwater maintenance.
So, we're running out of time, but I just, it's not going to stop here. I mean, we could walk up Longitude Drive and ask how many people even know there's a retention pond, let alone the fact that they know that they're supposed to be taking care of it. How do we address this going forward? You mentioned one time the city, we had talked, you, you mentioned about a letter going to go out to the residents. Are we still thinking about, I mean, somehow we have to bring everybody in that neighborhood in on what's going on. Um, maybe it should be legal from law, Rob, I don't know. And I, I don't expect an answer now, but maybe between now and the next meeting, you guys get together and talk with Mel or whatever and figure out a, you're not going to sue everybody, but like I said, walk up the street and you're not going to find everybody that's in, that's in on this, especially the guy who moves in tomorrow.
And that was going to be my suggestion, because you can't wait two weeks now to meet or the grass is going to be two weeks, two weeks taller. So, can, Mel, can I ask you if you would maybe contact Rick or whoever? And we, I think letters need to go out so we know, these people know what they're dealing with, because there's still going to be people that don't know what they're dealing with. And maybe set up a process to address this, get, get some sort of funding stream going, okay?
Back over Pandora's Box, we do have a property maintenance, that if the grass goes so high, the owner's responsible to have it cut and not the city cuts it. Are you responsible for, if, if it's above that limit, that, that you all collectively are responsible because it's, it violates our, our mowing code?
Here's the thing, Bruce, they don't own it, it's not on their property.
Supposedly, I was told that two hundred Mansfield Avenue owns it.
They do, and we own the, if you go to the auditor site, it's, it's with the house on Mansfield Avenue, right in the corner of Fairgrounds Road and Mansfield Avenue. The lady bought the house originally that started all this and didn't realize she owned a retention pond. And since that's, that's changed hands, and then the city owns a lot next to it. But it's, because it's a retention pond off of Compass Point, it's creating the problem, they don't own it.
How did she buy the property and not realize what she...
She bought it, I believe she lived out west and she had a, her husband was in the military, she bought it online. And, well, laugh or not, um...
The Knox Cattle Dam's the same thing, they didn't know they owned, yep.
And I guarantee you, I, I hate to put a number to it, but, and if I have to, I'll walk up the street with Mel, we'll take each side. I guarantee you, there's a bunch of people there know, know what they're supposed to be doing. That's why I'd like the city's help in trying to figure this out.
Okay, well, we're going to, uh, turn it now over to, join that committee that was fun, Mrs. Woods. Uh, we're going to move now to, uh, planning and zoning, Mr. Hillier to discuss the T I R C recommendations.
That is called TERC, um, Tax Incentive Review Council, um, has a recommendation to us. This is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-eight, um, we'll give a second reading tonight. Mr. Scott, I've asked you, um, if you would give your, uh, what you know about this to us. And I think we're probably going to be talking more about section one, two and three, is, is anything correct?
Uh, perhaps from your legislation, I've got my notes and my comments from the TERC meeting that we just held. Mr. Gocke and the ADF are nice enough to put all of this information together and assemble it for those who sit on the TERC board. Uh, just so you'll know that the county commissioners sat on the board, the mayor and I both sat on it. Um, a representative from each of our school districts, Mount Vernon and the Career Center, uh, all of those folks have a representative that sits on this board as well. Uh, you know, years ago, uh, when, uh, enterprise zones become, uh, pretty popular here in and around the community, um, I had heard from a number of people in the community said, well, who takes care of this, who polices these people and see whether or not they do what they're supposed to do? Enterprise zones are tied in with job creations and, um, in, or the equipment, uh, as well, facilities and so on. And so, that was the comment was, does anybody ever do any oversight on these folks? Well, yes, the TERC board does that and we do it annually. Uh, for, for anybody in the county, any jurisdictional area who have some of these, um, tax abatement-related facilities or projects, uh, are all gone through the TERC board to see whether or not everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. ADF does a fine job, uh, in doing all of the homework for us, if you will, and, um, taking care of whether or not the compliances are there, uh, whether or not they're getting ready to roll off the books, you know, because they had a duration of time at which they, uh, were going to have a sunset, you know, their program's going to end and those taxable relations, relationships are going to kick back in. So, uh, with that, uh, everybody, as you, as we're talking about, you know, tax abatements, that affects a number of entities. Primarily, you've got your schools, okay, because it's a real estate tax-related, uh, composition that's going on here. So, the schools are always at the forefront in that. More so then is the, the projects themselves. Uh, in ours, we only have two left on the books, I believe. Uh, actually, we would have had a third one, but the Chrome building doesn't exist anymore now, so that has been removed. And then, uh, that land, it flipped back into being taxable, let them call it. Sano, uh, out on Blackjack Road is where we have one of our facilities out there. Uh, Mayor Mavis and I at the time, uh, Sano was thinking, you know, they were down at the Jervisby Web Company facility for a while and they were, uh, you know, they had two hundred employees and they needed a bigger facility and they were thinking about leaving town. And so, uh, we all got together, the players so to speak, if you will, and said, wait a minute, what can we do to keep these people here? And of course, our share, the city's portion, was, we went in and, uh, put in the infrastructure for water and wastewater, uh, to the new facility out on Blackjack Road area. Uh, so that was our contribution, a private developer did the facility, built the building in themselves, um, and then leased it over to, uh, to Sano. Uh, so that is kind of the partnerships that we see in these types of, uh, activities that go on. And of course, uh, the building structure or not the equipment inside, but the building and structure inside or the building itself is on the abatement. And, uh, then they have the employees that count as, as part of the, uh, investment as well. And so, uh, no ADF is, uh, always collecting on an annual basis that information so that we can always tell what's going on and what's, uh, what the compliance is. Um, the other thing that goes on in the TERC board again is, um, to look at, um, as I said, entities across, if you have a township like Clayton Township, uh, has an enterprise zone going on with Columbia Gas out in the Bangs area, uh, that facility gets reviewed, uh, with the assistance again of ADF. And then the board, uh, would determine whether or not they're in compliance. And if so, then, uh, there's a seg- segmentation of who actually votes for the motion to continue the abatement. Now, Mayor, uh, and I said on, uh, any of ours that are inside the city, uh, we're voting members. The two school districts are voting members, the commissioners are voting members. So, they, that, that's who accept those. If you're in a township or in fact you're in the village of Frederick Town who happens to have one up in their area of FT Precision, then it, the representatives of the commissioners, uh, the affected school people and, uh, the village folks. In fact, I think it's Wayne Township perhaps, maybe even if that, um, that's, that's how the voting for the, uh, decision is, do you continue the abatement into the next year? And from that point on, it just keeps going again, as long as folks are doing their compliance of what they're supposed to be doing. So, this is the big oversight of the TERC board, is the big oversight of what really, uh, who manages, whoever keeps track of what's going on. And like I say, uh, ADF does all the homework for us and we appreciate what they do for that. Uh, so that's the oversight there. Now then, the other thing that we have is the CRA, uh, you know, the, the, the community reinvestment areas as well. Those get, uh, a, a look at as well. And then, when we get done with that, we go into, um, uh, the city's, uh, TIF districts. And we just give the board and the, and the, uh, the other panel people, uh, an update on what we're doing in our different TIF districts. We currently have three in our, in our jurisdictional area. And with that information, it's just, uh, a provision that, uh, everybody in the TERC board, uh, gets an update as to what's going on. Uh, our biggest, uh, one that we have is, uh, is going to be, of course, you know, it's in the Kishakton Road area, uh, right now. Uh, our next largest one that we would have, uh, was, is number three, actually, they call it. And that starts clear up at James Street, comes all the way down to, uh, about thirteen. Lightens off and swims over to, uh, Heritage Park is included in that. And then as you get clear out to, um, Miller's Market. We reach down over around on, um, Mount Vernon Avenue, uh, in that particular TIF district. It's kind of a jigsaw puzzle, but, um, I think I might have been a part of that as well. But anyhow, uh, all of this goes through the TERC board and, and other entities then, because like we say, the biggest in, impact is to the school systems. Uh, in our TIF districts that we, uh, have right now, uh, the first one that we created, which was in two thousand, um, we entered into private agreements with the two school districts and reciprocate monies back to them based upon our collections. Uh, in twenty twelve, when the law was changed, um, we are no longer permitted to do that kind of an arrangement anymore. And so, what really happens is, is that, um, in the handshake agreement with the county auditor, as opposed to her sending me all of the money and then turn around sending it all back to the school, uh, we have a handshake agreement that says carve out what the schools has and send it to them.
Explain it to me, so, if, if a school is held harmless and you, when you have a tax abatement, where's the money come from, it comes from us or, or, or they, or they don't pay tax, the school taxes on, on the, on, uh, their improvements?
The, the, the people who are, are making the abatement and they're actually paying in are the businesses. This is no realis, there's no real estate that's residential, there is no residential real estate, it's all commercial. And so, the resources are coming, they're still, the, 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 the commercial people are still paying their, their amount of their real estate taxes. It's the carve out of getting some of that resources that comes over towards the city side.
All right, I've leaked over into my other meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, I mean, to give you an opportunity.
I, I appreciate it. And I will give this a second reading and we can discuss it further when it's on the floor.
If you have any questions, love you.
We put it on the floor at the next meeting, thank you, Terry.
Moving on to the CRA exemptions, Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, counsel, this is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-seven in your packet. Uh, Mr. Gocke is here to help talk about this. Um, Jeff, if we maybe can concentrate like this, where you're doing away with section four, changing section four and all that stuff?
Yeah, it's a real easy, be great.
Yeah, it'll be real easy, be real easy and.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
You sure?
Here we go.
All right, we're rolling.
Okay. Trying not to sound like the Micro Machines guy either, so you can follow along. Um, so what, we came to you a couple of weeks ago and asked for a change, an amendment to the existing housing CRA rule. If you recall, multifamily projects, uh, that is anything that's taxed under the commercial code, which is four units or more, okay? Those received an automatic abatement that we negotiated with the potential, uh, projects, projects that were considering coming here. Uh, we kind of talked it out, like what, what is it that you would need? Uh, went to you guys, went to the school and kind of settled on a, it's about 90%. It's 100% um, tax abatement. And then there's a payment to the schools that's about 11%. Um, so effectively what the company is getting is about an 89% abatement. That's blanket for all multifamily projects. That's the existing rule, okay? What we want to do is change that to make it consistent with our existing tax abatement policy for any other business that wants to move into the city of Mount Vernon. So that would be no more blanket abatements. Everything is then negotiated with you, with the schools, with the commissioners and with the company on a mutually agreeable rate and term, okay? And the reason we do that is because we want to make sure that, one, the company needs the tax abatement, right? It's a but for abatement, okay? So but for this abatement, the project wouldn't happen, okay? And we want to give them just enough of the people's resources to make the project happen for a project that's going to be beneficial to the city, okay? Before, with the multifamily blanket one, that was meant to incentivize pioneers. Hey, we need housing, come on up here, we've got this tool for you. Let's, let's demonstrate there's a market, let's have proof of concept. We feel like we've done that. So now we want to be a little smarter, a little more strategic with the tax abatement for multifamily and say, that would all be negotiated. And we do that for you as your contracted agent. We handle all of that stuff and then I'll bring you a recommendation, um, for a rate and term that's favorable for everybody. And that's it. So the only other thing I want to add is the last time I was here, you asked me to include something in the legislation that essentially protects the existing projects. Rockford, Highland, Eastern Star, the school, I think that's it. Um, that essentially protects those. So working with Chris Conley at Taft and talking with Rob, I think this is an update from when we talked an hour ago, we've got just like a one sentence, section two, we're going to add into that legislation.
Tonight?
For later. If you want to do it tonight, we can.
It's up for adoption for tonight.
Okay, then I've.
Or you want to bring it back?
I've got a one sentence amendment that I can share with Rob right now and then we can do that during the legislative.
So you'll share that with me between meetings?
Yep.
So counsel, I will ask to amend and then I'll ask to, to adopt this ordinance tonight. So you'll be here, if there's any more questions?
Yeah, I'll stick around. Yep. And that was more than five minutes, sorry. I didn't.
Actually, you have a minute.
Oh, questions?
I guess I've got to cut you some slack from now on. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to that, from any meaning, we're going to move back to planning concerning Mr. Hillier to discuss the Pleasant Township annexation.
What is this? Oh, is this about this?
Yeah. You asked me to talk about.
Oh, that's fine.
All right, counsel. Now I'm off kilter again. Annexation, this is ordinance 202329. This is the, uh, infamous annexation on, uh, from Pleasant Township. Where we were asked to annex the house so they can annex the rest of the property. And counsel approved that. And now it's come back to us for final approval. Was that kind of close, Rob? It's all yours. I asked for Rob to maybe give us an update of where we need to be on this and, um, this is also for second reading tonight and it will go to third reading. So.
What I pass around to everyone is a two-page handout from the county commissioner's annexation manual. And this sort of shows the flowchart for how annexations happen. And I thought it'd be useful for us to start with this so that everybody can see where we are. Now previously, we've had the consent to annex and that's the one that's got the very tight timeframe. And there are only five or so reasons at the consent to annex that counsel can say that we do not consent to it. Then it went back up to the county commissioners, they approved that, and then it comes back here. And once it come, once the county commissioners approve it after the consent to annex, that starts a 60-day window. And then between 60 and 120 days after the commissioners approve the consent to annex, counsel has to vote to either bring it into the city or not to. And if counsel does not act by 120 days, the annexation dies no matter what. So, and this, unlike the consent to annex, there are no things that counsel does or does not have to find. Is the counsel will make the decision to annex this, annex the property into the city or not. And that's counsel's decision. And there are no specific requirements that have to be found one way or the other. Okay? Is that sort of what you were thinking about, Mike?
I wanted to know if counsel has any questions on that. I have the one. So if counsel were to vote this down, I actually have more than one, what would happen?
It doesn't, it isn't annexed into the city.
If we do nothing, it's the same thing.
Yes.
So if we don't, we don't have to vote on it or we can vote on it, we can vote to reject or, or not vote and it's still turned down, or we can vote to approve.
Yes.
And that's just a, a majority vote, four to three. So there's no legal recourse, anybody can take after us, uh, uh, up to this point or?
People can always sue you, Mike, is that?
They wouldn't sue me.
Well, they can sue the city and counsel. And so, but when you take a look at the cases, as long as we jump through all the hoops, which we have done on this one, and counsel chose not to annex it, that would be the end.
Questions? Tammy, is it clear?
I'm just wondering, and I don't know who this question's to, just briefly, one, two or three positives and negatives to do on this for the city. What are the positives and the negatives to do this?
Well, the.
Growth always means more income tax.
Right.
Um, and depending on, you know, obviously we'd like to be able to sell utilities, um, now that we have the capacity fees, is tap, capacity fees, right? Capacity fees, that is at a pretty respectable amount. That really does help take care of some of our utility problems when we need to add more people to that. Um, it also is a way of managing the growth because it fits in with the comprehensive plans in Knox County and, and yes, it is, it is a field right now, I get that. But it is a field that touches the city limits. It's not somewhere out in the middle of nowhere. Um, and so the growth plans that Knox County, uh, regional planning has, um, laid out is growth should happen inside and adjacent to where the current infrastructure is. Another, it is right on a, on a state route as well, so it's a, it's a straight shot south.
So what do you see as the negatives?
Uh, I don't, well, it, it would be costly for a developer to make sure that we have utilities out there. I don't think we've got sewer out that way. I'm not, we don't have sewer, but we do have water that goes out that way.
But we would count on them to pay for that.
That, the developer would have to do that.
And that's why whenever in the consent to annex, we specifically said that we would not provide those utilities. So they're required to bring the line to the development.
So I'm not sure that's a negative for the city, negative for the developer, but not a negative for the city.
Right. I don't, I, I mean, I'm having a hard time seeing the downside of this because we know people are coming. And, you know, this is, is something that is going to, I think, have, uh, an increased property value, which will add property taxes that will, that will go to the schools and go to the, uh, various county, uh, organizations. Um, and it's on the south side of town. I'm having a hard time finding the negatives to this.
I think that, um, one positive, we've seen recently how a developer came into a piece of property that was within the city and what he was proposing did not fit well with the surrounding community. And I think that that went through the proper process and went to municipal planning commission, um, who did not allow that particular project to move forward. So if we want to control what type of development happens in Knox County and the area surrounding the city, it should come within city limits so that we can say, no, we don't want you to break this up into 10 acre plots with one unit on each plot. We really need some density in order to protect more agricultural space out in the rest of the community. And that's where I see a benefit, uh, because agriculture is vital to this county. And density is loved and hated, but it's also necessary to protect that additional space.
I think the other thing to add to that too, sorry, Michael.
You're all right.
Sorry.
Um, is if, if, uh, if, there's no saying, there's no telling that that, that still could not be a development in, in the township. Uh, that could also happen, but now we will not, the city doesn't benefit from any of the revenues, but the residents out there will still use our amenities that the rest of us are having to pay for.
But the township's still going to collect the real estate, is that correct?
Well, this could also, this question, this could come under one of the new community authority arrangements as well. And allow us to bring, you know, say they're going to use our infrastructure, you know, even if they're not in the city, people are going to come north and use our infrastructure. And this would allow us to.
Yes.
Work with the new community authority.
And create improvement.
Contradiction to the density. Um, they're annexing 103 acres regardless, whether they're going to build one property on 10 acres or on 100 acres. We have Rockford, um, just is, is what, doing 50 apartments on 40 acres?
50 apartments for Rockford?
Which Rockford building?
Oh, times 10.
500 units.
What I say, regardless. So you're looking at, if you want to put density in there, you're looking at putting a lot in there, um, compared to what these other developers are doing on the other properties that we have going on. Um, we have no plan for traffic, zero. We're going to be right back to where we were on 13 and begging that they put in two turn lanes. Um, I like, they're going, they're going to use 103 acre cornfield regardless. So they want to put a house on every 10, on 10 acres, that'd be wonderful. I mean, in my opinion, I voted no the last time, y'all know my vote now. Um, but I think once again, it's way, yes, they're coming to Mount Vernon. But look out, Johnstown, we're going to be just like you. You're not going to be able to get through this town.
Could I have one bit of context, not to that, but to something?
If you come to the microphone, so it's on record.
So the, the current property owner has said that they are going to market that property for development. I mean, that's one thing that maybe was, has been missed through all this.
He's not, he's not local at all whatsoever.
Right, that's correct. And so he's going to sell it and he wants to develop it with housing. Um, I don't know that it's, well, let me, so to me, it makes sense that the city would want to control what goes there and who its neighbors are. We like our friends in Liberty Township and I work for them too, but in something like this with a real high density thing, you would want, I think the city would want to control who its neighbors are. And there are processes after the fact to, to help determine what that development is like, right? There's zoning, there's municipal planning, there's all of the, the utility processes, engineering, that kind of stuff. That particular parcel as well is pretty hilly. There's a 50-foot gas line easement that runs through the middle of it. So if it's 103 acres, you're not going to be able to develop 103 acres of that. There's a creek that runs through it. It's maybe 60. Um, I'm not a builder, as you know, but just knowing what I know in my professional opinion, it's not going to be quite that much. And just from a good development standpoint, density usually goes towards the city center where all the stuff is and then you kind of work out and you have like less density.
So if it is 10 acre plots, it still helps the city control how that is done?
That's right. And to what the mayor said earlier too, you get, you collect the income tax where before you wouldn't, you collect the utility fees where before you wouldn't, they'll join the NCA where before they won't. Um, it, it's a lot of upside. Full disclosure, I advised the Realtor to annex it into the city. So, um, I think this is a win for everybody in this case.
Yeah, I, I think the key point here is that it's going to be developed anyway. The city might as well be the beneficiary of the utilities and everything else. That, that makes sense.
Okay, it's going to get a second reading tonight. Um, we can have more conversation on it once on the floor at the next meeting. I have to move forward with the public hearing.
Yes, we do. The public hearing starts at 6:45 and it is 6:45. Uh, so I turn that back to Mr. Hillier, complaining and zoning. They have a hearing on West Gambier, South Norton rezoning. If, if we have time at the end, we come back to this. You have four questions, but we do need to get into the hearings.
This public hearing is going to be for 30 minutes. Um, this is to discuss the zoning of three parcels, two parcels at one address, 1104 West Gambier Street, from Clinton Township LB Local Business to General Business, City of Mount Vernon. The other one is at 120 South Norton, Clinton Township RRA Rural Residential and Agriculture, I got through that, Todd, to General Business, City of Mount Vernon. Um, this was approved unanimously by municipal planning in May. Um, what we're going to do is have somebody come up and speak on behalf of the rezoning in favor of it. Anybody else that wants to speak in favor, then we'll have anybody else that's opposed or has questions. So who wants to speak about this? Mr. Ramsor?
I guess I'm the only one here.
Thank you. Name and address and why you're here.
Mark Ramsor, 104 Dust Street, Gambier, Ohio. Do I need to hold?
No, we trust you.
Okay, very good. Um, so the properties on West Gambier are transferred to my sister Susan Ramsor a year or so ago and I own the property on South Norton Street. And, uh, really worked with, uh, Lacy Blankenhorn on this. The main reason for annexing these into the city are they were sort of, well, they were adjacent to the city and I'm not sure there's a homeless issue now, but at one time there was a homeless issue down there. And so it became a matter of jurisdiction between city police and sheriff's department when folks moved back and forth between those properties. So once these are annexed in, it'll be completely the, uh, or at least primarily the jurisdiction of the city police. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll answer them.
I think we're all pretty much up to date on why we annexed it in that. Questions for Mr. Ramsor? Stick around. Thank you. Is there one, anybody else that wants to speak on the, for this piece of legislation? Anybody else that wants to speak for it, against it, or any other questions? We have a couple of people, come on up. And if you just give your name and address, it'll be fine.
My name's Robyn Stevenson. I live 1102 West Gambier. And I guess my concern is to Mr. Ramsor, why are we concerned about this now? The property's been empty for 10 years or so, so is something going to be built?
I can, I can, I can actually explain that. Is that they were just annexed into the city.
Right.
And the law requires us to apply city zoning to these properties because they didn't have city zoning. So we have to give something to them and that's why we're here today. It's not because he decided he wanted to develop it, it's what we're required to do under the law.
To bring them into the city.
Once they've been brought into the city, then we have to apply the city zoning rules to them.
Okay.
We have to give it some kind of zoning. It was basically before local business through Clinton Township. Um, I assume that's similar to our general business.
It's, and it's surrounded by general business, which is why that was the zoning classification decided to give to these ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, you can welcome and come back up.
Okay.
Sir, did you have anything for this?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm just an adjacent property owner, but I don't feel like I have any questions right now, I'm just here.
Thank you. Counsel, don't do this to me again. Questions? You ever, everybody understand what's going on?
Yes, sir.
So I have one.
Let me, one question, does this, um, does this bring in all of that area to the city?
It's already been brought in.
Pardon me?
These two islands have already been brought in. They've, they've been part of the city now for six months, maybe a little bit more than that. Now we're just applying zoning rules to them.
Okay. But are there any other plots out there in that region?
Yes, there are several of them, but we can't force the owners to bring them in, although we'd really like them to.
Okay.
Is the, uh, what used to be the junkyards out there?
Part of it is, part of it is not. And then there's a strip of about six houses.
Yeah.
That are just laying out there, there's, that's the, those are the only two parcels in this, sort of the west end that are not in the city.
And now that this is in the city, that's their opportunity to be annexed as well, if they are, if they're.
Well, all of these were already totally surrounded by the city, so.
I have a question, Mr. Ramsor. Now that you're in the city, is there, we do have certain rules on building condition, those type of things, is there any, are we gonna do tearing down, cleaning up, fixing up? Because the last time I was down there, I think we had some, like the one that used to be the public entrance to the glass gardens, what didn't look real healthy. Are we gonna do, and, and the, um, this is not Mike asking, this is asked to Mike to ask. I believe some of the, uh, temporary hot houses weren't looking too hot behind here either. We have plans to do anything with all that?
Before I transferred the property to my sister, I did take down, I think, all but one of the greenhouses, the, the hot houses or whatever, and did clean up quite a bit because there had been a complaint from Clinton Township. And I know the, she's made arrangements for the large pile of slab wood, the gentleman from SOS, who's not the gentleman who brought it in, but I think they've worked out an arrangement for him to clean that up.
That's all that pile of lumber that's in the back?
Right, yeah. There was a guy, I don't think of his name right now, that was working with the city also, and I don't think he's around anymore. Uh, I don't know if Matt knows who that was.
Is it Mike Frieda?
No, that's the gentleman since.
That's what she's currently on.
Brought all of it in and left it, yeah. I know there's a nonprofit that uses the buildings there that don't look too great. Can't think of the name of the nonprofit right now.
Actually, the owners, I can't think of the name of the property.
Okay. But anyways, those are probably questions better for my sister than for me, since I've transferred.
Did you pass that on?
Oh, I can pass that on to her.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have, um, code that, you know, buildings have to be to, you know, a certain degree, so just something I might look into. Any other questions? Do, do your questions get answered? Um, this has to go on for a half hour, so we have twenty more minutes.
Yeah, I, I'm Joe Adrian, I own the, the old ice plant down.
Come on, Joe, come on up to the microphone.
So I, my address is three oh eight Kishawton Avenue. Um, so I own the old, uh, ice plant, which I'm in the process of getting it tore down. And then I've submitted my permits and so on, and the asbestos reports to get it done. I was here several months ago. My only concern was I got a buyer for my property, as soon as I get these things tore down, I was just, he was curious as to what was gonna go on with the, uh, four parcels back there. But I had heard that it was just getting rezoned, because there were a lot of homeless people back there, but I didn't know if something was being built.
It was, it was annexed. What happened was, we had homeless people in the city, and we had, we would get down, try to help out, move them out, then they move into the Clinton Township property, and the city couldn't do it. I don't know what was going on with the sheriff, what their position was. So we thought it was best that administration worked out that we annex into the city, and that stopped that leaking over and, and that problem there. The property he's speaking of that he owns, in case you don't remember, is back as far as him and I go, it's right there at the railroad tracks on Gambier Street, to the left.
It's a two-story, uh, lean-in, and, um, I'm not gonna fix it up, I'm gonna tear it down, so. Uh, it used to be Scotty's Lumber Yard back in, uh.
They wouldn't know that either. She might.
I do.
It was the old ice plant, it was built in nineteen eleven. So, but yeah, I have that, and then the other property's kind of, they're all behind it. Now I think there's some ponds back there, maybe some lakes possibly.
Uh, property maintenance appeals, he was here and they condemned the building, so.
All right. Cheryl, you got any questions? We have twenty minutes.
So I guess one question I'd have would be, so the property has just been changed to, from residential to commercial, or?
It's, it has township zoning. We don't have any city zoning, we're just applying city zoning to properties that have been brought into the city.
So the.
It's not because any development is planned, but we have to put some zoning rules on all the properties that are within the city, and after a property is annexed into the city, that's when we have to do it. GB, uh, general business.
So all that'll be, and I think there's like seven acres or twelve acres possibly, or?
There's seven acres that we own in the gas company.
So that'll be gen, uh, general.
Business.
After that, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's the only questions I had, I just wanted to update everybody on what I was doing, uh, with my building.
Thank you.
It'll be down soon, so.
Does this have any connection to what we're talking about many or two ago with the old farmer's exchange area?
No.
Has nothing to do with that?
No.
Even though it's by the railroad and it's by there, there's no connection to that?
No.
No check, no connection.
So this still leaves some properties down there where if there was an incident, our police can't, they don't have jurisdiction?
If there's an emergency, we can respond under mutual aid, but in general, there's that row of six houses, I forget exactly what numbers they are.
On Adam Street.
Adam Street. That the sheriff's office has to respond to, as well as part of the old, um, as Mike said, dump of the recycling and other parts down there at the very end of West Gambier.
Any dad, mayor? Rick?
All right.
Did that help some of your? You've lived there how long? Back when Tommy played on the little league team, minor league team?
Lee who played with Jeff.
We were in Cub Scouts together.
That's right. So Tommy was.
Tommy was one of the, that kid would play nine ends of baseball by himself. He loved the game that much, didn't he? He was always on the field playing ball. Yeah. All right, so, any other questions? So here's what I'm gonna do, um, counsel, I am gonna ask to adopt this tonight. I am gonna close this meeting for now at, I'm gonna call it seven o'clock, and if there's somebody comes in for a reason, we'll have to reopen. Does that work for you, Ms. President?
It works.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's here.
Do we have to make these meetings at a half, half an hour, or can we make them just fifteen minutes?
It's now seven thirty p.m. I'm gonna call the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three legislative portion of City Council order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Hillier.
Here.
We are in session. We welcome Mr. Ruckman. We replace one John with another John. And so now we're back to full strength. Appreciate you being here. Congratulations. The invocation this evening will be given by Roger Tickle from Set Free Ministries. Please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And as always, I really appreciate you allowing us to do this. I count it as a privilege. I really do. So thank you. Let's pray. Father, your word says that if my people which are called by my name will humble themselves and pray, seek your face, turn from their wicked ways, that you will hear their prayer, forgive their sin, and heal their land. And Father, we live in a land that needs healed. And Lord, as the council sits together and they make decisions concerning the people of this city, I just pray, Father, that you'll help them to be humble, help them to be honest, and just help them to, God, just have the welfare of the people at heart, which I'm sure they do. And I just pray that at the end of the day, Lord, that your name is glorified. And we bring glory to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, on your packets are the minutes of the June 26 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
They're moving second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
Counsel, on your packet were several committee reports for your review. I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations and no people wanting to speak on matters of city concerns. So we'll move into the legislative portion of the meeting. Counsel, the packet is before you. Are there any corrections or additions to this agenda? That being said, I will assume it's approved by consensus. And Mr. Hill asks that you read these by title and number only this evening. We have no resolutions for third reading. We have one for second reading. That's Resolution 2023-58. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-58, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the 2023 Knox County Tax Incentive Review Council concerning parcels of commercial real property in the city of Mount Vernon receiving tax exemptions for purposes of economic development and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give Resolution 2023-58 second reading tonight.
Yes, resolution receives its second reading. Now I move to resolutions for first reading. It's Resolution number 2023-60. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-60, a resolution adopting a park facilities naming rights policy for the city of Mount Vernon.
Ms. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just give this its first reading. And if we could have a 15-minute committee meeting next council meeting. Counsel, if you have questions or thoughts on this, please send those to me so that I can work on this in the interim period and bring maybe a revised version to you at the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
This resolution receives its first reading. Now we move to ordinances. We have two ordinances for third reading. And the first one is ordinance number 2023-24. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023-24, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number 70-00366.002 and number 70-0366.003, both also known as 1104 West Gambier Street from the present zoning of Clinton Township LB Local Business to GB General Business. Parcel number 70-00366.004, also known as 120 South Norton Street from Clinton Township RRA Rural Residential and Agricultural to GB General Business. And parcel number 70-0366.005, also known as 130 South Norton Street from Clinton Township GB General Business to GB General Business and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023-24, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
It'd probably be bad of me to ask Mr. Hill to repeat all that again, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we did have the public hearing on this. That is two parcels on West Gambier Street, one on South Norton Street. These are properties that we annexed into the city of Mount Vernon a while back. Therefore, they have to take on city zoning, as we discussed in the public hearing. Questions? Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2023-27. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023-27, an ordinance amending Resolution number 2021-39 to change the circumstances under which certain community reinvestment area exemptions are offered in the city of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023-27, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend 2023-27 to read as follows. Counsel, if you go to the second page, we're going to change Section 2, which is at the bottom, to read the requirements set forth in this ordinance shall be applied to projects that have not yet commenced. Projects that have already begun city approval process or been issued building or zoning permits are eligible under the previous legislation. Section 2 be changed to 3, Section 3 changed to 4, and Section 4 changed to 5. If you have questions, ask Mr. Hill.
Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving in second for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hillier.
I have nothing to add other than further that Mr. Gocke asked us to do this. He worked with the state law director. He worked with Mr. Hill. We got it done.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The ordinance is amended. Mr. Hillier.
I move to adopt ordinance 2023-27 as amended, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for this ordinance to be adopted as amended. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
I have no further.
Anybody else? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted as amended. The final ordinance for this evening is an ordinance for second reading. That's ordinance number 2023-29. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023-29, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 105.65 acres, parcel numbers 59-02289.000 and 59-02289.001 from Pleasant Township into the city of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give ordinance 2023-29 second reading tonight.
This ordinance receives its second reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to comments and administration. Mayor Starr.
Mr. President, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ruckman. Good to have you here. That is all, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Sick.
Nothing. Good night.
Mr. Scott.
Anything further, Mr. President?
Mr. Stoller.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Brawn.
I just want to remind counsel that at the next meeting, we're going to have the third piece of NCA legislation that will come forward. I'm going to try and circulate it before the end of the week so that everyone will see it before it gets onto the agenda. But that's part of the whole series of adopting the NCA that Mr. Gocke and our lawyers from Bricker had shown up and talked about. So I just want everyone to be aware that that's coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Hillier. I did ask Mr. Gocke, are you going to bring it there at the next meeting then with your entourage or?
Do we want the entourage?
Tell me.
And their available hours?
If I'm paying it, no. We can talk.
I'll check, but we're probably okay without him.
All right.
But I'll be here.
We've moved the legislation through. Mr. President, I'd like to thank those who helped, especially Mr. Hill, for quick and cleaning it up as fast as he did and made it very easy for me to take care of. Rob, thank you. Terry, thank you. Mr. Gocke, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mrs. Woods.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, just welcome Mr. Ruckman to the council. I don't know if you were like I was the first time, and all this was happening so quickly, and I was just totally lost. But hopefully, you've been caught up, and that's good. It's good to have you here. Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I also want to welcome you. And it's nice keeping it John here. Makes it very good for me. All I have to do is keep remembering John. And this Thursday is my husband's birthday, and it's a big one. So if anybody sees my husband, John Seville, Thursday, wish him a big happy birthday. Thank you.
Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, sir. I had the opportunity to witness the Mount Vernon Fire Department training last week and just was impressed. First of all, thanks to New Life Church the Nazarene, they had some storage buildings that were going to be demolished. And they allowed the fire department to come in. And they were throwing saws around and cutting through garage doors and doing trench cuts down roofs and just went, you know, learning the whole process of that. And I'm just pleased with their continued efforts. And I can't even get through a 30-minute dumbbell workout without being practically, you know, useless the rest of the day. And the men and women there were throwing saws around like they were nothing. So I appreciate their work and their training. Shout out to them tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Keener.
I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Ruckman for filling that seat. Just be prepared, this is not how short council meetings usually are. I did fail to mention earlier, one aspect of the splash pad will be that it will be fully ADA accessible. I know that we had had some phone calls about ensuring that a splash pad would be accessible. So this doesn't require any stepping or uneven grading. You'll be able to wheel right down into it. On top of that, the company that we are working with is known for their inclusive play spaces. So kids that want more or less intensity, there will be a variety of water toys for them to play with. And it won't be just all crazy town. Also, I would like to encourage anyone who is looking for fitness in the city this year to check out the Mount Vernon Parks and Recreation page. Our great director, Tanner Salyers, has been working himself, I don't know if he ever works himself too hard, but he has been working very hard to coordinate several different groups. And so there are some that you can do with your kids. There are some that couples can do together. And I would just encourage you to check that out because he has really created quickly a great system of fitness in the parks. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Ruckman. It's your turn.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for the warm welcome that I've received. And I know a number of you have reached out, and I've spent some time with you and trying to get up to speed on what all is going on. So I appreciate that as well and just wish to thank you all. And I'm just looking forward to working with all of you and doing the best to my ability to represent the people of Mount Vernon in the second ward.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Well, that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. I'd like to thank the media for being here this evening. And don't forget the Knox County Fair is coming up and a lot of events here. We had a nice first Friday last week. Beautiful weather for it. Who's responsible for the weather? Was that you?
That was me.
Very nice. That being said, I call for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
They're moving in second. We adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.
You are.